So where is Mr. Fombi?
I don't know. He said I talked to him earlier and he was saying he's gonna be here.
And you're here? Bill, what about Bill?
I don't know about the guy. I talked to him, but he didn't say one or another.
Hey, Mr. Shannon, you on this morning?
Yes, sir. Everything's ready to go when you are.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna wait another three or four minutes. Uh, Mr. Fombi is not here. Mr. Fuller is not here yet. So, uh, we're gonna wait another three or four minutes.
Okay, you on the way? Okay. He's like, where is that? Bill? You say you're on my account?
Oh, boys, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, you all right? Yeah, uh, we keep waiting. Hold up, sir. All right. We can take a little bit of our.
Okay. Okay, Shannon, we think we can go ahead and get started if you want to start the recording.
Yes, sir. It's on.
Okay. Good morning. Uh, it's Monday in November the night, 2020. Uh, it's about five minutes after ten. And his agenda is seventy forty-three. And, uh, we're gonna open up this morning with, uh, Brother Danny Benson. Uh, they give an invitation.
Father, we come according to the name of Chief of Driveout. I ask Lord God to give unifying invitation once again. Let the love of God be tendered broader in our hearts, Lord, let us begin to love our brother as we supposed to love you. I ask you, Lord, as the Constitution counts, Lord, we give God our privileges. Lord God, we give you the wisdom, the knowledge, the understanding that save you to continue to lay this of town, Lord God, in the way that we do. So I ask you to prosper this town, Lord, and send us regardless like you never had before in this county. Lord, let this be shared like the Holy Ghost period, Lord, within this county. And Lord, I thank you once again for the leadership, and Lord God, for peace and blessed this county. Is Chief the same up or anything?
Amen. Okay, I do call the meeting daughter. We do have a call. Uh, acknowledge any guests that's here this morning. We're gonna go ahead and get started with a consent agenda. Uh, only thing we have missing is the previous minutes and the clerk's, uh, report. Y'all have time to look over that?
Yeah.
And, uh,
that, that previous minutes, is that record session, does that include a special session also?
That includes all minutes.
Make the motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. White, uh, second by Mr. Fombi. We, uh, can accept the consent agenda. Uh, there's no discussion. All in favor? The four oh. For the record, uh, Mr. Fombi is here, uh, Mr. Fuller is not. So that's just for the record. Number two is to deliberate, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one, discuss appropriate approve and issue proclamation, uh, recognized in January twenty-four through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as school choice week in Newton County. And this is, uh, just a proclamation that they put out and would, would like for us to support.
I make that motion.
A second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. White that we approve this, uh, proclamation of recognition of January twenty-four through the thirtieth, uh, as, uh, twenty twenty-one as a school choice week in Newton County. Is any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number two, uh, discussion of appropriate authorize the advertised request for proposal title work, land surveying, and closing service for properties to be acquired through the Harvey buyout programs, furnished through the Texas Land, uh, General Land Office contract twenty dash oh six six dash oh fifteen dash C one oh eight. And that be presented by Mr. Mark Taylor.
Like, uh, this is in conjunction with the, uh, once again, the Harvey buyout program. And this is just providing authorization to go out with the term with the title company. As previously, uh, we are requesting that the title company provide a surveying as part of the services they provided as well. So that would not have to be required independently of the title.
Okay, you will be, uh, putting that out for advertisement, or is that through something that we do?
Uh, it'll, it'll be advertised and we'll do that in conjunction with this, this county.
These buyouts, uh, it better, what are they, a hundred percent, seventy-five, twenty-five, or ninety?
This is a hundred percent.
Okay, you're at motion?
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi, second by Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, authorize to advertise for request for proposal title work, land survey, and closing services property on the Harvey buyout program, uh, on, uh, contract twenty dash oh six six dash fifteen dash C oh eight. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number three is discuss appropriate authorize advertised request for proposal for appraisal service, service for properties to be acquired through the Harvey buyout program, funded by Texas General Land Office, uh, contract twenty dash oh six six dash oh fifteen dash C one oh eight. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
This is in conjunction with the same buyout grant, uh, through the General Land Office. And this is authorizing us to go out and secure up our, uh, the appraisal project.
Okay, your motion?
Uh, make that motion that we authorize the advertising request for proposal.
Second.
You do that.
Here. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Fombi, uh, on item number three. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number four, discuss appropriate authorize the advertised request for proposal for construction contract to complete demolition services for properties to be acquired through the Harvey buyout program funded by Texas General Land Office. Uh, same number twenty dash oh six six dash fifty, oh fifteen dash C one oh eight. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, once again, this is in conjunction with the same grant, uh, through the General Land Office. And this is authorizing to go out and secure up our contracts for, for the demolition work on any buyout projects that may be done.
I make that motion.
A second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that, uh, we'd authorize for item number four. Is any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Number five is discuss, uh, and if appropriate, approve upon the Thomas Hawthorne to the Southeast Texas, uh, groundwater conservation district for the two-year term beginning in January first, uh, twenty twenty-one. And this has, uh, been occupied by Mr. Greg Wabi. And his term is up, and so, uh, we have asked Mr. Hawthorne to serve on that board, and he accepted. So I'm asking y'all to approve it.
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made and second, uh, Mr. Fombi made the motion and Mr. Thompson made the, uh, second that we approve Thomas Hawthorne for Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District for the next two years. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number six, discuss appropriate extend the COVID nineteen disaster declaration until December the night, twenty twenty. Uh, that's just a continuation that we move, uh, to the next general, uh, court date.
Make the motion, we extend.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we extended the COVID nineteen declaration to December the night. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number seven is likewise, exactly, we extending the Hurricane, uh, Laura disaster decoration till, uh, December the night.
I make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson, second by Mr. Fombi, that we extend the Hurricane Laura declaration till, uh, December the night, twenty twenty. All in favor? Four oh. Number eight, discuss appropriate extend the, uh, Hurricane Delta, uh, decoration until, uh, December the night, twenty twenty. That's, uh, we will continue that until we hear otherwise by our emergency management.
Make the motion, we extend Hurricane Delta declaration.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Mr. Fombi, that we extend the Hurricane Dec, uh, Delta declaration to December the night, twenty twenty. Uh, in discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number nine is, uh, setting the holiday schedule for the twenty, uh, twenty-one. Uh, we've worked up that schedule and, uh, if y'all see fit, uh, I need to approve today.
How many was it? Sixteen? Thirteen?
Uh, did you change anything?
I mean?
There were two.
I make that motion.
I second.
You say, Thompson? Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Thompson that we, okay, setting the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Okay, number ten, uh, and these are likewise gonna be about the same thing always from ten through fifteen. And, uh, I'm gonna read the first one and then we'll just, uh, take items after that. Uh, number ten is to approve resolution approving authorization signatures designation for CDBG DR forty-two sixty-six contract eighteen five three three dash oh 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 dash B two seven seven. Ms. Leas?
Yes, sir. And all of these are, uh, because my title changed and they were adding cherry on that too as an alternate sign. And that's on all six of these.
Okay, now that is for the approval for all these grants that because we had the change of the new auditor and you go into the grant administrator. Uh, then the signature is having to change and adding Mr. Cherry on there and re-titling you. And so this is, that's what this is all about there.
These are all CDBG contracts.
Okay, but they are all active?
Yes, they're all active.
Active grants.
Well, I make that resolution to approve resolutions. I make that motion for approved resolutions, ten through fifteen.
My second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that item number ten, number eleven, number twelve, number thirteen, number fourteen, and number fifteen, uh, will all be approving the authorization signatures designating, uh, the new signatures as auditor and the grant administrator. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Thank you, Ms. Leas. Number sixteen is discuss and consider authorization of the pub, uh, advertising procure of engineering application of informationation if the award, if the award of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two community development block grant uh, through the Texas Department of Agriculture. Ms. Leas?
And I'm working with, um, trailer associates on this and we're gonna go ahead and, you know, procuring engineer, uh, we're gonna be called, they're gonna be awarded soon. We need to go ahead and get that, that.
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi, second by Mr. Thompson, that we authorize the advertising for procurement of the engineer in the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty-two, uh, community block grant, uh, through the Texas Department of Agriculture. If, uh, any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number seventeen, discuss and consider authorizing the advertising to procure engineer for application in the implementation if awarded grant funding. Ms. Leas?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, I think it's just a different grant where we're gonna advertise for, um, an engineer for the brick grant and it was just awarded to, um, trailer associates for the administration. So we're working together on that.
Okay, before, before we start making the motion, uh, Ms. Taylor, would you mind, uh, telling the commissioners a little bit about the, the brick, uh, grant and, and what are, what is our expectation of it? Or, or what is our involvement with it? Or what, what would be the outcome of Newton County?
Uh, once again, this is brick, uh, building resilient infrastructures of community. It's taken the place of the typical hazard mitigation grants through Texas Division of Emergency Management. It's just got a new name, new title, uh, kind of chased it up a little bit. Once again, this particular application cycle, it's due January the twenty-ninth. It is a competitive application cycle. Uh, this is a nationwide application. If the county goes forward with an application, you would be competing nationwide with the funds that are available. A grant application, you can apply up to fifty million dollars. Uh, the total funds that are available are, uh, just under four hundred and fifty million. So if everybody capped out, which once again, we don't have that crystal ball. Uh, if everybody capped out, you would, you would have eight and a half applications that could be funded nationwide. We do anticipate that most of the applications will be for less than that. There again, we can't tell you for sure how much it is. It is a competitive cycle. It is very competitive cycle. As far as, as far as scoring criteria, and once again, one of the things right off the top that's gonna be a detriment to Newton County is they put a lot of emphasis on, uh, regulations that protects the construction, construction of houses and so forth, and building codes. Based on the building code that you have in course, hard with your graphic area, that plays in heavily with your scoring criteria. Which Newton County as a whole and the rural area does not have building codes. So, uh, once again, you're penalized going right out of the start of the application on this application. Uh, I don't, I don't mean to keep coming to the county in a, in a negative attitude, but, but I do want y'all to have all the pieces and be fully aware of what you're looking at in this. Uh, flip side of it, if you don't apply, you definitely not gonna get funded. We cannot tell you how many applicants there're gonna be, uh, what could be nationwide. We feel certain there, there's gonna be a lot of applicants. But to stand here and say that, that Newton County does or does not have a good chance to get funded, I honestly cannot tell you that at this point in time. I can tell you once again that, that you are gonna be penalized right off the bat for not having building codes.
And this will be a seventy-five, twenty-five match?
Yes, sir. It is seventy-five, twenty-five match.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Mark. Uh, I think it clarified a little bit about, uh, uh, what this grant is all about and what, uh, do we even need to participate or not? So?
Uh, and, and once, if I might have said one additional thing, Judge, this is mitigation. And I know a lot of times all these brands run together. This is not tied in specifically to any prior disaster. This is things that the county would look at as far as mitigating, mitigating against future disasters. So you do not have to have, uh, evidence of damage of a prior disaster in, in conjunction with that.
So, uh, and, and when we advertise this engineer and, and if we procure one, then could we have a workshop one day just to discuss? Uh, what the project might consist of?
Most definitely. Uh, we'd be more than happy to have a workshop, sit down with you, with the commissioners, go through the scoring criteria, uh, take a look and let y'all determine if, if you wanna submit an application and if so, what you'd like to submit that application for.
Okay. How many marks did we have against it? So just, well, we're non-permitting, but I mean, there's gotta be a list of them, right?
Uh, yeah, there's a list of them and there again, I, I can give you that scoring.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying is it worth it?
Yeah.
This is for housing, housing only?
No, no, this is for whatever the county.
Roads.
The city of mitigation.
Right.
Person, whatever.
Once again, this would be mitigating against future disasters.
But this is just not statewide. This is nationwide competition though. I mean, uh, chances that we will qualify or is it worth it to invest it? That's, that's my concern, is it worth the investment, you know, with such small?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, uh, Mr. Taylor and whoever we grant the, uh, engineering to, you know, it'd be time and effort out with no, no money expense to the county. But it'd be time and effort that y'all put out. Uh, it would not result in anything.
That, that could very well be judged, but, but once again, we have been secured by the county. If y'all wanna go forward, we're gonna do our very best to, this is a competitive application. Uh, we, we understand what, what we're putting on the line going into this and, uh, it's just part of our job also. You know, do we relish the fact that working on an application when there's a good possibility is not fun? They're not, not necessarily. We, we like to look ahead and prove, but once again, we, we work for the county. We appreciate the opportunity and we're gonna run in whatever direction y'all tell us to run in.
Well, I, I think that's, that's where the workshop would come in hand to, to see whether we want to, uh, uh, go forward with it. And, uh, have a, a discussion and more, uh, input from you, uh, about the possibilities. And, and what really throws a kink in, I think, i- is our coding. Uh, Newton County has no building codes whatsoever, and that's one of the criterias of, of scoring.
That's the first scoring criteria on it. Uh, once again, the other thing that, that's, in my opinion, that, that kind of hurts you going into that twenty-five percent match.
All right. Thank you. I'm here at motion.
I make it.
Are we tabling this or what?
No, no, we're, we're authorizing to, uh, advertise for engineering.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Thompson that we authorize the advertising for, to procure the engineer for application and implementation of the award of the brick, uh, grant funding. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh. Number eighteen, discuss and appropriate approve purchase of the county man's truck and seeking finance. And that's, uh, that Tommy Gold's truck. He, as y'all know, furnishes all his tools and he's got thousands of dollars worth of them. Uh, the truck he's in, he, he, you know, he's making do. But, uh, what I'd like to do is, is buy him a utility truck with lockable doors on the side and where he can actually organize and, and keep his, his equipment, uh, under secure. And at the same time, uh, transfer that truck over to Mr. Fombi and his, uh, solid waste department. Is that right, Gary?
That is correct.
If you wanna use it to?
That is correct.
Pull the, uh?
Pressure washer.
Pressure washer around and, and some of the other tools that he needs. So, go ahead, Ms. Leas.
And we, I think we kind of touched on this whenever we had talked, well, before. And we forgot to include it when we did the mass, uh, approval of doing the trucks. So that's why we needed to put this on here to authorize to, uh, to purchase and seek finance. And that way we could do it in the group that we're, we're doing, hopefully get better.
I make that motion.
A second.
Uh, Tommy's furnishing all his tools?
Mm-hmm.
All, all except the shovel and rake.
You wanna buy him some?
Huh?
You wanna buy him some?
Well, we're gonna furnish him a truck to lock him up in, furnish him a truck to move him around. And he's gonna furnish to, he don't have a problem with that?
He said he rather furnish his own tools and then he knows, uh, what he's got, where this at, and what kind of condition it's in.
Okay.
And like I say, and, and I think, uh, if you've ever looked at his tool box, he's got thousands of dollars worth of them.
Yeah, I know. I, I didn't realize that he was furnishing them.
Yeah. And, uh, and to, to say a little further, we, he gets no compensation for, uh, when he took on the job, uh, that wasn't discussed, so he just brought his tools along with him.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think some point in time, uh, I think if, if, if he's, uh, Zozzo were to go out, I, I think we need to reimburse him on his, uh?
Yeah, we, we already have something in there that, that at least we replace the tools that are told me that, that he uses up.
We, we are getting a valuable man in that position for the county. Uh, because when we hired him, uh, I didn't think it'd be any way that we hire a man for sixteen dollars an hour. But does his quality and, uh, to keep up and have his job, that, uh, he takes it very serious.
Yes, he does.
And does it very well. So, uh, I think the least we could do is secure his, is, uh, is tools.
I agree.
Well, I make that motion.
I second.
Okay, motion been made and second and, um, maybe by Mr. Fombi and second by Mr. Thompson. Okay, motion been made and second by Mr. Thompson that would purchase the county maintenance truck and seek financing. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Okay, number 19, is discuss and provide advance notice in the inter-jurisdictional emergency management program for the intent to withdraw. And what this is, is this is Mr. Olin Beans' position. As y'all know, we've been under Jasper, Newton, and Sabine emergency management program for several years, and is that done in 2000?
2002.
2002. And so we have, Olin and I have discussed this in length, and I think it's time for us to withdraw from that program, and if y'all see fit, I'd appreciate y'all approving it for me.
Is there gonna be any benefit to that?
Huh?
Any benefit to that?
Any benefit? Yes. Olin, would you step up here and tell them the benefits of us pulling out from Jasper, Newton, Sabine?
Well, I was appointed by Judge Dougherty in 2009, and this program, you know, this interlocal agreement was started in 2002, and this was after the courthouse at Burn. Newton County had lost their emergency management plan. They had the paper plan, not electronic plan, and so the county has to have an approved plan through PDMS in order to receive grants, that kind of stuff that's tied to it. And so the quick fix then was for Newton County to join Jasper County, and then Sabine County did the same thing, and were all included in one emergency management plan with Billy Caddis, the emergency management court. I am appointed by the Newton County judge, and there's a gentleman up in Sabine County appointed by Sabine County judge. And in the past, Newton County has paid Jasper County for the emergency management program, and it's varied over the years, the amount, I believe, Leas, is what's going on. And I've been in a unique situation where I'm also hired by Jasper County in order to receive the money that, or part of the money that Newton County pays Jasper County for emergency management. And so, you know, I work, all three counties have in the past, this has been a part-time position. I get paid part-time pay. In what year? 2015, I believe it was, I believe five years ago, Newton County Commissioners Court wanted to give me a raise, and they did not want it to go through Jasper County. Once they gave them that money, there was no guarantee I would get the money, so I became a Newton County employee. And so I'm a Jasper County employee, Newton County employee, I get paid $8.50 for 20 hours a week from Jasper County, and I get $6,000 or a little more from Newton County a year. And so Judge has wanted to have our own program where we don't have to go to Jasper whenever we have a disaster, so that we can go forward with that, whatever grant money we might be able to apply for with our own emergency management program.
Will I make that motion? Get on with it.
I say.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Thompson that we give advance notice to the inter-jurisdictional emergency management program to withdraw, and I have prepared a letter there and before y'all that I'll be sending out after we give verbal notification of what we've done here today. So any more discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Okay, number 20, discuss and appropriate renew joint resolution establishing inter-jurisdictional agreement program between Newton County and the city of Newton. And what this is, is we're just, we're not dropping Newton, city of Newton, and we are having to update it, and so this is what this is all about.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we renew the joint resolution establishing the inter-jurisdictional agreement program between Newton County and city of Newton. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Number 21, discuss and appropriate approve interlocal agreement between Newton County and city of Newton on an electronic billboard, and what this is, is a billboard that we've been involved with in probably a little over a year. We've had several discussions about it, and in this interlocal agreement, it spells out the responsibility of the county and the responsibility of city of Newton, and we've got that drawn up and it's in y'all's packet there, so if y'all see fit, appreciate you approving it.
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made, second by Mr. White, that we approve the interlocal agreement between Newton County and city of Newton on electronic billboard. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Number 22, it's time to pay the bills, Ms. Cherry. If you come around here wherever you hear you, be fine.
Okay, Fund 10, general fund, $643,168.80. Fund 19, District Attorney State Fund, $2,122.19. Fund 20, Road and Bridge General, $38,891.93. Fund 21, Rowan Bridge Precinct 1, $34,730.52. Fund 22, Road and Bridge Precinct 2, $26,072.50. Fund 23, Road and Bridge Precinct 3, $96,831.44. Fund 24, Road and Bridge Precinct 4, $26,884.23. Fund 25, the courthouse security, $144.12. Fund 29, the VAW grant, $5,292.92. Fund 31, Commissioner's special precinct 1, $63,091.36. Fund number 32, Commissioner's special precinct 2, $12,617.2. Fund 33, Commissioner's special precinct 3, $46,072.88. Fund 34, Commissioner's special precinct 4, $6,519.66. Fund 36, dedicated road, precinct 1, $261.44. Fund 40, registered purpose, 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 purposeation, $977.92. Fund 41, level road, precinct 1, $4,007.61. Fund 50, solid waste disposal, $85,009.81. Fund 51, voter registration, $4,937.19. Fund 53 is the Newton County library, $13,343.39. Fund 55, historical operating, $3,822.22. Fund 68, hazard mitigation grant, $5,844. Fund 72 is the FEMA grant, $8,676.16. Fund 76 is grant, $987,721.69. Fund 88, state fee fund account, $23,484.96. And Fund 92, technology fund, $250.50. Total of all funds is $2,141,740.60.
What was the total again?
Million, it has to be grants, right?
Yes, $987,721.60.
Make the motion and pay the bill.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we pay the monthly bills. All in favor? Oral. Your motion to adjourn?
Make the motion we exert.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by the county judge. All in favor? Oral.
Judge, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Keith Johnson, do you want to?
Okay.
I came out of the county to participate in the technology supply ring, but that means now we're gonna get to send all our own buyers out and they take on a nice computer, please set up the work they need to do, but they also have work anywhere unlimited internet connection, so we're simply get home to their town. Their education continues, and it's thanks to Mark and our deals participating in that program, so thank y'all. Beautiful day.
How'd your school do it? How's the building coming?
Fantastic. They're having a big move.
I had material, you can look at it and tell it's fine for certain.
It is. It really is.
Have you got all your funding yet?
Right.
Well, I'm glad to tell y'all what to tell us.
Hey, y'all, judges?
Yes, sir, us did, and appreciate everybody being on. Thank you.
Thanks.